The Tiverton Town Council for September 24th, 2012 is called to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am collectively speaking as a symbol of the United States of America and consider the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mrs. Mello?
Counselor Coulter?
Present.
Counselor Shabbett?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Nelson is absent and Counselor Pelletier called. He'll be a little late, traveling back from Boston.
Under the Consent Agenda for Business Brought Before the Council: Approval of Minutes from Regular Council Meeting, September 10, 2012; Approval of Executive Session Minutes from Regular Council Meeting, September 10, 2012; Approval of Executive Session Minutes from Special Council Meeting, November 1st, 2011; Approval of Executive Session Minutes from Regular Council Meeting, August 9th, 2011; Counselor Rodrick abstains, absent; Approval of Minutes from Special Council Meetings, September 19th, 2011; Counselor Rodrick abstains, absent; Receipt of Minutes from various Boards and Commissions, six altogether; Correspondence received and filed; Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements, four in number, totaling $4,491.94; Distribution of August Revenue and Budget Report from Treasurer Denise Saret; Barbara Pelletier, representative to Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau, with September Report and comparative listing of Meals and Beverage Tax. Do we have any item to be removed?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve the Consent Agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, anyone opposed? Under Open Public Forum for Announcements, Comments, and Questions? And I don't have any notes that anybody is listed to speak tonight. We have no one, okay? We have nothing acting as a under-board of licensing. Appointments and Resignations for the Personnel Board: There are two vacancies to expire October 15th, 2015, and we have two new requests for appointment: Joy Gilkinson and Jennifer S. Mello. Is Mrs. Gilkinson here?
Hi.
Okay?
I want you to have a seat.
Yeah, you want to be more comfortable. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Leonard.
And good evening. I'll ask my two standard questions and maybe more, who knows? I may get benchers on tonight. The first one is, keeping in mind that the people in the television audience do not have the benefit of the paperwork that we have, would you please tell us why you're interested in being on the committee? And secondly, why you feel you're qualified to be on that committee, Personnel Committee?
Sure. Can I do it backwards? Can I tell you why I'm qualified first?
You certainly may, either way.
Okay, so, before moving to Tiverton, I lived in New York City and I worked for a very large financial services company. I worked for that company for about 14 years.
Joy, excuse me, could you put the mic in front of you? There you go. Thank you.
Is that okay? And at one point, I ran the product rollout, quality assurance, technical documentation, and client services department in four different countries. So, I've had my share of interviewing and hiring, not just the United States, but all over the country. We actually put them through quite the regiment. It's crazy what we do to hire people in a development department. We require testing, we give them, I don't, just some of the things that we've been through are, it's very interesting. We do not play mind games, but, what is the word that I want? We do like challenges and try to get to see if they think outside of the box, basically. Because when you're working with clients all over the country, everybody uses a product in a different way, everybody does something different with it. And so, we want to make sure that people aren't just looking at the way they use the product. So, anyway, it was a very challenging experience. And, like I said, I've hired from different departments, I've interviewed all types of people, I've looked through thousands and thousands of resumes, and I think that I get a feel for what a person is like, just by talking to them, interviewing them, looking at what they've done in the past, looking at, you know, just chatting with them to see what their life is about. And, so, that's why I think that I have pretty good experience in the personnel business. Now, the reason I brought that up is because I lived in New York City, but once I started my family, got married and started my family, I decided to move back here to be with my family, my mom and whatnot. And when I did, I actually grew up in Fall River, I didn't grow up in Tiverton, but I chose to come back to Tiverton. I came here with my husband and we drove around and I showed him the area, and we fell in love with the town because it was small, we fell in love with it because it's near the water, because it has fantastic neighborhoods, because there's a ton of people, and within a year, you pretty much get to know everybody in the town. And it's just a fantastic place. And so, now that I'm raising my two little boys here, I think it's important to be part of the community and to do what I can to make this place a great place to live. So, when I heard about the Personnel Board and the two vacancies, I thought that it would be a good opportunity for me to be able to give back, and since I have all the experience with interviewing and hiring, I thought this might be a good fit.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jennifer Mello? Okay, Mr. Leonard?
And Ms. Mello, thank you for coming, and I'd ask you the same two questions, again, keeping in mind that the people in the TV audience do not have the paperwork we have at our disposal. Why are you interested in serving on the Personnel Board, and why do you think you're qualified to do so?
Okay. First off, I have grown up in Tiverton, I've lived in Tiverton all my life, I'm now raising my family here. So, I think it's important that I am contributing towards my town in some way. I'll tell you a little bit of history as far as what I do for work. I've worked at a company called XRA Medical Imaging for the last 12 years. When I started off with the company, I was a recent grad, and they hired me, I was a, I'm healthcare management, and they gave me a chance as a recent grad. And I started off at their Wakefield office, which is down towards Narragansett, and it's a huge, busy office, and where we have all modalities, you know, MRI, CAT scan, and whatnot. So, I ran that office for about three years, and when they opened up the Middletown office, they asked me to open it up and start that, because I did such, you know, they thought I did a pretty good job. So, during the five years that I was as, worked in a management capacity, I was involved in the hiring process of technologists, receptionists, tech aides, and whatnot. So, I was required to look through resumes, interview staff, and sit in, you know, through the interviews, and to find the right fit. And it wasn't just for my office, Wakefield or Middletown, it was for all the offices throughout Rhode Island. So, I had a lot of, I had a lot of, you know, experience with the interview and looking through resumes for all the offices. So, I had five years of that, and then, once I got married and started having a family, I decided to step down from that and go back to the technical aspect of my job. So, since then, I've been working as a tech. So, which leads me to this current place right now, of why I'm applying to the Personnel Board. I have some background in interviewing and reviewing resumes, I feel that I have the knowledge to be able to do that. I realize I did review the charter, and I realize that, you know, it's not just looking at a resume, you're trying to find the best fit for each job, and working with a department, department head, or whatever, looking for the best fit for whatever the job may be, or whatnot. So, I feel that I have the knowledge and I would be able to do that. So, I hope I answered all your questions.
Yes, you did. You did. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
As our custom, we'll take it under advisement and then vote at the next meeting.
Well, we do have two vacancies, and we only have two requests for appointments. We can do it tonight.
If you would like.
Yeah. If that's the sense of the meeting, I think that's normally how we've done it.
Well, I would make a motion that we appoint Joe Gilkinson to one of the two vacancies, expiring October 15th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, anyone opposed?
And I'll make a motion that we appoint Jennifer S. Mello to the vacancy to expire October 15th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, anyone opposed?
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Under Unfinished Business, the first item was put on the agenda by Mr. Pelletier, and it's an update on the website. I would suggest that we just hold this off in case Mr. Pelletier shows up. Item number two, Counselor Lambert, Initial Meeting of Committee to Oppose Tolls on the Secconnet River Bridge. Those of you who follow this news in the local newspapers are aware of a number of activities relating to the effort in opposition to tolls on the new Secconnet River Bridge, and that has included the formation of a number of committees in the East Bay communities. As I indicated in our last meeting, we would have an initial meeting of a committee to oppose tolls on the Secconnet River Bridge, representing for the most part, the Tiverton community. That has now been scheduled for this Thursday. I know that there was some mix-up, I think at one time it was being announced as Wednesday, but it will be this Thursday, here at Town Hall in Tiverton, starting at 6:30 PM, we will have the initial meeting of the committee to oppose tolls on the Secconnet River Bridge. I've contacted a number of groups here in Tiverton, asking them to have representatives. If you're interested in this issue, you're certainly invited, and if you know groups that might be interested in having representatives on our committee, please make sure that they're here on Thursday. Item number three, Counselor Coulter, Opposition to Tolls on Secconnet River Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to briefly follow up on your remarks, the committee that Mr. Lambert just spoke of would be a Tiverton committee. There is also a network forming across communities, which has taken the name Stop for Secconnet Tolls Opposition Platform. Several of us are representative on that committee. They will be meeting this Saturday with, I believe, 15 members of the state delegation. So, I just wanted to report that back to you as well. In addition, the Tiverton EDC is meeting this week to kick around ideas of how they might, from a government perspective, document the economic impact on the town. So, what you're seeing here is, there's efforts being taken on the government side, and then, of course, the Citizens Committee will also be doing things along its line. For example, I think we're approaching 15,000 signatures on petitions, so, if you're looking to volunteer or to try to help the cause, certainly Thursday is a great idea to stop by. And I also just wanted to report out that we have started to get statewide coverage of this, not only through the Projo, but also through the State of the State program on public access. I just want to report those efforts.
Under New Business, Town Administrator, the Stone Bridge Committee, Mr. Goncalo?
When the Stone Bridge Committee was initiated, it was going to run through January 1st, As we all know, it's taken some time to be able to get funding to continue the project. So, the committee will no longer be valid after January. So, what I'm asking is that the council, and we need to reinitialize this committee, what I'm asking is that the council make this committee go for another two years to January 1st, 2015, and to reappoint the members that are existing and the new members.
Just for clarification, for those who don't have any of this material in front of them, we have a, the original resolution for implementing the establishment of the Stone Bridge Committee, and it states the following purpose, quote, "The purpose of the committee shall be to assist and advise the Town Council and Town Administrator on approving, enhancing, and beautifying that part of the town known as Town Landing and/or the Old Stone Bridge, specifically including the Bridge of Butnance/Pier and Grinnell's Beach and the immediate surrounding area." Mr. Goncalo, have we been in touch with all of the people that are on the, currently on the committee, and are they willing to serve, continue serving on the committee?
Yes, we have, and they are willing to continue to serve, and we have two new members.
And who are the new members?
Chi Lariano.
Okay.
Representing the business community, and Linda Jenkins, a second member of the public.
Again, for everyone's information, the current membership includes Kate Michaud, our town planner, Stephen Bellucci, the Public Works Director, Steve Hughes, the planning, on the planning board, David Vanyer, the Harbor Master, Gary Rose at Recreation, and Len Schmidt at EDC, and Bruce Cox on the Harbor Commission, and the, we have three public members, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Which are the ones that we, which ones would we have to appoint tonight?
We would have to appoint the last three on your list. I can take a stab at the names.
I don't believe this commission has been advertised the way we do with the Boards of Commissioners and the other. We were never sure what this committee consisted of or what it was even meeting, but I can tell you that Ms. Lariano and Ms. Jenkins, they had been appointed, and their position holds till 2014, so they are set. But Mary Wilcox Zefnuzki, her term actually would have expired in 2011, had this been an active thing we would have brought forward. We did contact her to see if she wanted to, you know, reapply, but the way the policy goes, I'm going to need to advertise this in case anyone else comes forward. She's the, actually, the only, there was really only one public member that is not filled to this point.
And we've got to January 1st, anyway, so...
Her term would only go to the 2013, because they have the stagger.
Would you prefer we, we could pass this resolution and point everybody above that one spot?
Everything except for the appointment of Mary Wilcox Zefnuzki, until at least it's been advertised so anybody else had a chance, because I have had another person come forward and want to be on here as well. And they've submitted an application, so I have to at least advertise more.
Okay. Well, starting with item number one, do we want to vote at this point then to continue the committee beyond its January 1st, 2013 expiration date?
Mr. Tights has a comment.
Yeah, I just think you should pick a particular date. I mean, this is, this is a policy that I drafted for the council some time ago, which was, you know, as you can see, a lot of members, different positions in the town, plus the public, and the idea was just to have some subset provisions, so that these things didn't just keep going forever. So, I think certainly extend it, but don't extend it indefinitely. My recommendation would be to, you know...
To 2015.
2015, 2016, whatever, whatever you're comfortable with, but have an expiration on it.
Ed, is that a motion?
I will make a motion that we extend the Stone Bridge Committee to January 1st, 2015.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, anyone opposed? And what we'll do, do you want any reappointments at this point, or should we simply wait until the ad...
You actually could appoint everyone, but these are not appointments, these are your town planner, your public works director.
They serve by virtue of their position. So, you don't have to appoint them.
You only have one...
You just have the two public members, one, we have two public members and one member of the public who's also supposed to be a business owner from here.
That really is my question, are we going to include in the advertising, the position that Mrs. Lariano now has and the position Mrs. Jenkins has?
Because she is appointed until 2014.
And Mrs. Jenkins, how long was she appointed for?
She is appointed until 2014.
Okay, so we have nothing really to do there until the advertisement?
So, there's only one position we can advertise for.
Okay, great. Excuse me, before we do, Nancy? Isn't it actually, it should be three members?
It should be three staggered, yes, it's three members of the public, one holding a business, one, and so that's how they...
Okay, so you'll advertise that?
Yes. And we'll do it as soon as we can.
And then put it on the agenda for, once you've done the advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
There's going to be a drug take-back program at the police station on Saturday, September 29th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, anyone wishing to bring expired or unwanted prescription drugs, they can do so between 2:00 and 10:00 on the 29th. But we ask that there's no hypodermic needles brought forward. The Police Department has received a $500 check from the Trust as financial support for their commitment to the in-state accreditation program for police departments. A second $500 will be given directly to the Police Accreditation Commission on behalf of the Tiverton Police Department by the Trust. Wednesday, October 3rd, the Cassidy Elementary School community is going to be celebrating a Walk to School Day, promoting health, safety, and the environment, and it's open to anyone who wants to join. On October 4th, there will be flu shots at the senior center between 9:00 and 11:00. You must be over 18 years old to get a flu shot. We were notified this afternoon from the Governor's Office that our CDBG award for the year 2012 is $173,000. We applied for $300,000 and received $173,000. Some of the items were not funded at all, and others, there were reduced fundings. And regarding our Marine One boat, we are going to be advertising for bids. We have been told that we can probably get $3,250 for the boat, but the council voted to get, to obtain a new boat, so while we're going through that, and you'll be getting at your next meeting, a request to approve going out for bids for the new boat. Meanwhile, we're going to have an auction with a $4,000 minimum in the newspaper. If we can get $4,000, that's better than $3,250. Or if it's not $4,000, then we don't have to take the bids. That's all I have. Thank you.
And any questions, Public Town Administrator? Under Council Announcements, Comments, and Questions?
I just have, just one thing, in talking about the tolls, if you saw tonight's paper, you know, Portsmouth said that speaking in one voice was very important, and I think that's what we need to do in Tiverton, also with all the committees and the interested parties, that we need to band together and speak as one voice against the tolls. I think it's evident, and I hope the Governor hears this loud and clear, that the East Bay does not want tolls, and I think if we can do it unified, it's even better.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. President, just another reminder that Miles from Megan, Bike Ride and Walk is this Saturday, September 29th. Rider Checking is at 7:30, Ride starts at 9:00. Walker Checking is at 9:30, and the Walk starts at 10 o'clock. It's a very good, it's for the Megan Elk Darrow Memorial Foundation fundraiser.
And where is this stock?
The Tiverton Town Farm.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I have two announcements, and the first one is more in the nature of an observation. Has anyone, is it just coincidence that Mr. Nelson and Mr. Pelletier are not here, and at 7:30, we're almost finishing up? The second comment, and I really don't want to make a lot of this, but it obviously has to be addressed. In a recent letter to the editor at the Newport Daily, they put a headline, quote, "Something is strange about sale of school buildings in Tiverton," end quote. I want to assure you that there is absolutely nothing strange about the sale of the Ranger School. Mrs. A resident of Tiverton wrote the following letter, and I think it does require a brief response. Earlier this summer, it was reported that Tiverton might net $5,750 on the sale of the former Ranger School after a $20,000 brokerage commission, and that the same commission of a flat $20,000 would be paid to the broker on the sale of the former Nonquid School. Whoever heard of a fixed dollar amount for a real estate commission, isn't 6% of the sales price still the standard brokerage commission? And whoever heard of a broker receiving proceeds that are almost four times greater than the net proceeds to the seller, as was the case with the Ranger School? This situation is sheer lunacy. When the Ranger School's sale was announced, I invited the members of the Town Council, most particularly those up for reelection, to shed some light on this contract. Now, more than a month later, not one member of the council has responded to my inquiry, either publicly or privately. Based on their indifference to this voter's concerns, I cannot imagine re-electing a single one of them. Incidentally, while the council members took no notice of my query, any number of fellow Tiverton residents have asked me about... Tiverton residents have asked me about their response. That letter was published without requesting any comment at all from the town council, at least no comment from me. And I just wanted to read the comment that I've sent to the writer of that letter and to the Newport Daily News. I'll make no comment about it, it says what it says. Quote, "I read your letter to the editor of Thursday, September twentieth, two thousand twelve, and did read your earlier letter as well. After reading your first letter, I tried to reach you by phone three times, leaving my name, telephone number, and a message on your answering machine. I received no response and only assumed that for some reason you did not receive any of the messages. I am available at any time to discuss any concern that you may have about the sale of the Ranger School building. My number is in the phone book." Quote, paragraph, "You indicated in your letter that you, quote, 'invited' the members of the town council to, quote, 'shed some light on the contract.' To avoid any misunderstanding, let me make it clear that what you did was write a letter to the editor, which any member of the town council may or may not have read. As far as I know, you did not copy anyone on the letter." Paragraph. "I should also note that any concern about the sale can be raised at the open forum. We have every town council meeting. The issues relating to the sale have been discussed at several meetings. Our next meeting is Monday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve." I did receive an email from the writer indicating that she did not receive my messages and making it clear that she did not intend to be here tonight. The comment that I wanted to make is that I would hope that the people here in Tiverton can anticipate that any time they make an effort to contact somebody on the town council to discuss an issue of some concern, that they will get some sort of prompt reply. But also, I think it's important to keep in mind that simply writing a letter to the editor, which the writer in this case acknowledges may or may not have been read by people on the town council, really isn't an invitation to, quote, "shed light on the subject," especially if you don't bother to send a copy of the letter to anyone. I read the letter, I suspect only because I have a subscription to the paper, and no one brought that letter to my attention. But there was a second reason I wanted to raise this and just sort of put it to bed and at least respond to some of the statements. And that is, I think the writer does have an issue that we should at least address, but I thought we had addressed. As you know, we paid a commission for the sale of the Ranger School of twenty thousand dollars. And actually, I'd appreciate anybody's input on how to handle this situation in the future. You may recall, those of you who regularly attend the council meetings, that three or four years ago, we had a number of people address the issue on the sale of these properties. And I think some of you will recall, I certainly recall, because I was on the feasibility committee, that we had some speakers here at the podium who suggested that we should sell these properties immediately because we could use substantial amounts of money from those sales to reduce school bonds. Very good idea. From the podium, we had suggestions that the sale of those properties would bring anywhere from three-quarters of a billion to one and a quarter million dollars. I'm sure that those were their best estimates. On the other hand, we had people who might be characterized more as realists or pessimists who suggested that we would be lucky if we don't have to pay people to take those properties. Given those evaluations and given the market that we're in currently for real estate, I don't know whether or not a decision to hire a real estate agent to do their very best to sell that property at twenty thousand dollars rather than making it on a commission basis was the appropriate move. But I'm suggesting that if anybody has any better ideas, let us know about them, because we have at least within the next year or two, at least one more property that may be going up for sale under the same circumstances, and that's the old community center when the new library is built. If someone can come up with a, I don't know what the appropriate fee arrangement is. When you can look at a piece of property and honestly tell yourself, we might be lucky if we break even. If we're not lucky, we may actually have to pay somebody a hundred thousand dollars to take the property to get it on the tax rolls. I mean, how do you work out a commission with a real estate agent in those circumstances? So any input that you have, we would appreciate it.
Excuse me, Mr. Lambert, can I?
Yeah, sure.
Do I need to go?
Yeah. There was just one further item I might note, and that is, you will recall that this item actually went out for bid. That is, we requested proposals from various real estate agents, and we received three proposals and picked one of those three proposals. Yes?
Mr. Lambert, with all due respect, I have, over the past several years, sent numerous letters to the board and have never received a response. So could you clarify?
To the board?
Yeah, to each individual member of this board. Could you clarify, maybe I'm doing it the wrong way, exactly how it should be done? The way that I've done it is I've gotten everybody's emails, and I've sent each individual by email. And I also have, sometimes I've given them to Nancy. I've done them both ways. But what is the right way?
I think it would depend on the issue, and I think it would depend on what question you're posing. I mean, if you, for example, if you had an issue that you wanted to address to me or to Mr. Coulter or Mr. Roderick or whoever else, you thought that they would be the ones who would be most interested in that subject, I don't think that anybody would mind getting a telephone call.
Well, my question, that's not my question. My question is, in writing, how is it to be done? Because what I have done is wrote, I don't do it specifically to one person, I address it to every member of the board.
And I think in most of those circumstances, and I know I've received some of your letters, they refer to our Town Administrator, and there are some ongoing items that you're involved with. But unless I've spoken to you on one of those particular letters, I didn't see some specific inquiry. The Town Administrator has the business of running the town on a day-to-day basis.
So that's what I should do, send?
That's how I would normally handle it. Send it to the Town Administrator.
Okay. And do I send copies to all the members of the board, or just?
Mrs. Mello will make sure that we get copies in the normal course. We get, when I say at the beginning and reading out the agenda that we've received correspondence, that includes that type of correspondence.
So send it to Mr. Goncalo with a copy to all the members of the board?
No, I think Mr. Goncalo normally would give it to Mrs. Mello, and she would pass it on to us, but if you would prefer to do it that way, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Under Town Solicitor, Items and Announcements, Brief Update on Tiger Tree, James Pelletier versus Tiverton.
Chairman, members, nothing on number one. Brief update is that there's nothing going on at the moment, except continuing to wait for various judges. And the second item is a request to schedule a show cause hearing regarding the excavating license for David Sisson. It's come to my attention, we received a letter of complaint about the council had issued a license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and that the location, the business address on the license is not zoned for this particular use, and that there is a violation outstanding. However, the council, it didn't come up when you were considering it, but it's been called to our attention. We obviously need to have due process, so I would suggest scheduling a show cause hearing so that the council can inquire of the license holder.
Do you need a motion for that at this point, Mr. Tights?
Yes, yeah. And maybe you want to do it the second meeting in October so that we have time enough to make sure the applicant, it's up to you, I guess. We have three weeks before the next meeting?
The show cause has to be advertised.
It doesn't have to be advertised, because the license wouldn't be advertised. The licenses, the excavating license isn't advertised, so the show cause doesn't have to be advertised. But he has to be notified and given a decent time to attend, so I would suggest that, whatever the date.
Let's see how soon I can get the notice.
Okay.
Do you want to set it for October twenty-second?
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any other items, Mr. Tights?
Not for me.
Town Clerk announcements, Mrs. Mello?
I just want to make sure that the public realizes October seventh is the last day that you can register if you choose to vote in the November sixth election, and the town hall will be open from eight-thirty to four that day to receive any last-minute registrations.
And just by way of housekeeping, do you want to just continue E. one, Mr. Pelletier's item, to the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll continue that at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Do we have, Mr. Tights, Mr. Goncalo, anything under closed executive session?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Now, this is completely off the record, but would anybody consider the possibility of having meetings and not notifying Mr. Nelson? We have a motion adjourned?
Yes, and a second.
Second, all those in favor? We're adjourned.